Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the August twenty second, two thousand twenty four meeting of the Lake Forest Board of Education. If you would all please join me for a pledge of allegiance followed by a minimum silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, native is all with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very welcome, everyone. Thanks for those who have joined in person as well as those who've joined in line. Just a reminder, we are streaming tonight's meeting across the internet and that recording as well as the meeting minutes will be posted once they are approved. We'll begin tonight with roll call of board members. Dr. Wyatt?
Present.
Mrs. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Rapp?
Here.
Vice President Starkey?
Here.
And Earl Dempsey, serving as president and chair this evening. If present, all five board members are here. Thank you all very much for your time. We're up to two point four approval of agenda, Mrs. Starkey.
Two point four approval of agenda. Make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Second, emotional floor properly second. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Two point five approval of minutes and make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August eighth, two thousand twenty four Board of Education Executive and regular meeting.
So emotional floor properly second. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions?
Aye.
We, motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Um, we are up to two point seven citizens' participation. Uh, opportunity for members of the public to address the board uh at the start of each meeting. For those who wish to address the board in person, we had asked for you to sign up at the front and to present that sheet to the superintendent's office. Do not believe we have anyone signed up this evening. Um, so with that, we will close public comment and we'll reopen prior to our next meeting. With that, we're up to section three reports, item three point one, financial reports. Mr. Kirk Kellerman, welcome, Mr. Kellerman.
Good evening. The first item on the agenda, we have the financial position report as of July first to start the fiscal year. Uh, this is uh one of the changes here. The one month of local payroll has been increased from eight hundred forty to eight hundred fifty six thousand. Small change there. But otherwise, this is our opportunity to see how we ended the fiscal year, even though it does show the first day of the fiscal year, which was really not much of a difference. Um, so the figure in the top left corner, the six uh million four hundred twenty seven thousand or six point four two million. That's up to four point five two million last year. Uh, and we talked at the last board meeting about some of the factors that led to that increase. Um, like the increase in the indirect costs that we uh retrieved from the uh CARES grant and the uh interest on our local funds is some of those big items there. Uh, the other non-local funds identified, like the division two, division three, there are just other options in the event that we don't have local reserves to meet to our obligation. Um, but we would always uh need no less than two months of local pay to cover costs of completing the payment of our ten-month teacher contracts from the prior year. Cause they like to get paid over twenty-six months. And so those final two months of that's filed to uh pay is occurred in July and August. So at a minimum, you always want to have enough to cover the our payables for those two months. So right now, we sit at about um seven and a half months of local payroll and reserves when we look at that six point four two million dollars. But uh that concludes the financial position report unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kell. Any questions on the financial position report? So this particular report will come back for a vote later this evening and then will be signed uh to be sent off.
All right. Then we'll go on and move on to the preliminary budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, so what I've done this year is I have created uh kind of a little different presentation. I've got the fiscal year twenty-four final budget alongside our preliminary budget. So you can kind of see how we finished the end of the year last year in terms of our final budget in January. And then what we're projecting to be the preliminary budget for this year. So you can see where the uh the increases and decreases are there. Um, we do have the state's two percent salary increase in there. Um, along with uh as as a total, the state revenues are up about seven point three percent. But the assumption that was used in building this budget is basically that you would earn no less than ninety-eight percent of last year's two hundred and seventy-eight division one units. So I know that the state typically uses that ninety-eight percent uh for uh budgeting purposes of of what they anticipate revenues. And so when we look at the like the division three equalization number and the education sustainment, some of those state discretionary funds, we use a little bit more conservative factor there with the ninety-eight percent. Uh, let's see, what else do we have? We have the state, the state brought back the uh enhanced minor capital improvement funds. So you can see a large block there. It went from three thirty-seven to seven twenty-nine. And a big portion of that is that additional enhanced minor capital improvement funds.
Um, can I ask a question on that one?
Sure.
Does that also come with a stipulation that you have to spend down as the last time?
Unfortunately.
Okay.
Yeah, we've expressed our displeasure over that and the fact that it's it's very difficult to get us down to a zero balance to the point where, you know, we have to ask for the new funds, but that's still in place for these enhanced.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the division two AOC, I I didn't talk about that, but that did drop significantly because we only plan on cashing in about four units this year versus we cashed in eight last year. And so the four is really, we're we're looking to get back the the four additional units we earn as a result of having these in district uh high roads uh classrooms. And so those are the ones that we're going to use to help pay for those classrooms, the the four cashed-in units. But otherwise, we're for the most part almost at full staffing. And so we don't anticipate cashing in any units right now, which is great news. Um, so we don't, we don't want to be in the situation where we have to cash in units. Um, we do have two new pieces of legislation that are showing up here. We have the mental health units that are now on the um the mental health block grant, and that's as a result of that hospital two hundred for the high school. Uh, putting the counselor and psychologist units there. And then also there was another piece of legislation adding the athletic trainers for high schools. And so they've also authorized that in the form of a block grant. And so we see the amount that Lake Forest received there, forty, almost forty-two thousand dollars for um athletic training. And then our opportunity grant saw a nice hefty increase there as well. And I think this is going to be the last of our large increases that we'll see with the opportunity grant as well. So. Uh, moving on to the local. Uh, we're estimating just under about a one point one million increase in local revenues this year. Which so that's because we didn't collect the final property tax credits from last year until July. So that's a little bit, that's uh deferred um receipts there. We did move our interest receipts on local funds from the current expense tax line down to the um other local revenue line. So uh last year, that number was somewhere in the six hundred thousand vicinity. And so that's why you can see that big jump in the other local revenue line.
And where did it come from? He said, which?
It came from the current expense tax receipts line.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Unfortunately, the way that we populate this report, it pulls from our our local funds appropriation and that captures our 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 interest on our local funds as well. Even though it's not pure current expense tax receipts. And so what I'm going to do this year is just going to sift those out and put them down under other local revenue. So that those current expense tax receipts look more like that pure number that you're expecting to see just from the 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 tax itself. Uh, let's see, federal grants are down three and a half percent for last year. So we've got a drop of over a hundred thousand dollars in our title one funds. So our current estimate for the total uh discretionary revenue budget is fifteen point seven million. Um, we actually collected sixteen million last year. But um we are accounting for the uh that ninety-eight percent in the uh the the more conservative ninety-eight percent for the um two hundred and seventy-eight division one units. And also the offset from the lower unit cash-ins that you saw in the the division two costs as well as the uh lower indirect costs that we expect to collect from the federal grants. So that's why we're a little bit, we're showing a little bit lower. So any questions on the uh the revenue side of that preliminary budget?
Any questions on the first two pages dealing with the revenue?
Moving on to the expenditure side, uh again, you have last year's budget as a comparison to see where we made changes uh for instruction. We saw, we're seeing a twelve dollar per people bump for the school budget allotments. That equates to about a ten percent increase. Um, so several years back, we had made cuts to all those per pupil allowances in the times when we had some pretty lean years. We were trying to make a lot of budget cuts. And so now we're, we're trying to get back to reinstating some of those uh to the schools there. Cause we did see the the pressure these past fiscal year where there were three schools that were right up against their budget and really wanted to purchase more, but couldn't because they were at their budget. So. Uh, athletics. So we see a couple of things going on there. We see an increase in transportation expenses again. Uh, Chipman has that one-time transportation line in there that I added. Uh, and that's for dealing with the the deck uh field renovations. So they're going to have an increased cost for transportation, whether it's to bring them to the high school uh for any kind of games or if they have to transport them to the Harrington Parks and Recs. Also, we see the dynamics of what we're trying to do with the uh high school where we have the main budget dropped by about nineteen thousand. And then we picked that back up as a separate equipment uniforms line. Um, and that's where we're essentially putting the gate receipts. So that way when they collect the gate receipts, it goes towards paying for the equipment and uniforms line. And then at the end of the year, if he has more gate receipts than he has in expenses, that will carry over his part of his line and be sort of an equipment uniform reserve such that in the future, if they have large pieces of equipment expenses, you know, uh high jump mat or something of that na- that nature, um they can pull it out of that that equipment uniform reserve line. For the aquatics, um, we've got the last year of the minimum wage increase up to fifteen dollars an hour. So that's why that's seen a little bit of a jump there. But really the big increase uh percentage-wise in this entire budget for the expense side is the the security side, the constables and the SROs. So both the Harrington and the the state police SRO are going up um twenty-eight percent between the two of them. Huge increase there. And then also you can see what we're having to pick up now uh that's not being covered by the safety grant or from uh division one units. Uh, so that's a hundred and eighty-four thousand that will pick up out of the local funds just for those. Uh, moving down to curriculum, we no longer have the CARES funds to rely on our curriculum purchases. So we have licensing renewal costs that uh we're preparing for this year. Uh, also the summer school program you see there uh has jumped dramatically. Uh, in the past, we have used CARES funds for this. Um, and so that fifty-four was what it was basically cost to run the high school program this past summer. And then uh let's see, tuition payment special school, that's expanding to Chipman. Um, so now we'll have one at North Elementary and one at Chipman as well. And then uh that's where I discussed cashing in four units to cover the the cost, a a portion of the cost of that program. Also, we talked about the visiting teacher uh last year and you can see as a result of buying that uh vehicle outright, uh we had the drop in in our uh annual budget. So we no longer have that fleet cost that we have to pay for this year. Moving on to the next page of the expenditure budget, um. So strategic plan, we have an increase there of about ten thousand for additional um professional development or mentoring costs. Uh, personnel lines says an increase there also because we have uh we picked up this frontline central uh to streamline our uh HR onboarding process and and create a full digital onboarding process. Uh, and that will increase again next year. So this is just the increase for this year. And then local salaries, we have our two percent local salary increase this year. We also have our final large increase that we're going to see in the Kelly subrates because as a result of the minimum wage increases, those were impacting the um the subrates, the state subrates each year. And so this will be the last of the large increases for the Kelly subrate increases. We're also picking up the cafeteria playground monitors we have at the uh four K to five schools. And so this was something that we picked up during COVID. Um, we had two cafeteria playground monitors at each of the K to five schools. And so um that had been paid for out of CARES funds the last three or four years. And so now we're picking that up on the local side. Um, cause that's been a a big help for the uh the K to five schools. And then finally, the other thing we did add in salaries is uh the additional local portion of ten additional division one units. Because last year at this time, we had probably vacancies in the teens. And so we don't have that this year. And so with that, I'm expecting to have those positions filled. Um, so I had to to account for, you know, paying the local side of those those additional division one units that we were expecting to earn. Then moving down, uh, there's no increase in it, but tuition reimbursements. And I put this in my weekly, but um we've seen a massive increase in tuition reimbursement requests this year. And so uh this is the most I've seen since I've been here. Uh, it's got a fifty thousand budget, but we think uh the requests are going to approach a hundred thousand dollars this year. And so, but that contract uh ceiling, it's in our negotiated contract, is at fifty thousand dollars. So. Uh, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, cause I know during some of the negotiation process, we had talked about the potential of maybe you know, adjusting that at some point. And then finally, our transportation. I looked back at our referendum presentations and we projected an increase over three years to four hundred and thirty-four thousand. And so here we are uh presenting a budget of four hundred and fifty thousand. So it has exceeded what we were projecting through the referendum. Um, and that's uh with this new driver pay increasing to twenty-five dollars an hour. And uh, so overall anticipating an expenditure budget of around fifteen and a half million compared to a budget of fourteen point six million last year, six percent growth. With the largest dollar growth being the local salaries, but the largest percentage growth is going to be from those uh SROs and constables. But that concludes, well, let me move on down. Uh, I do have the district reserve in there just to show you. I know you guys have talked about that previously of where our district reserve has been trending. Um, and then based on the um the budget, we're projecting a surplus of two hundred and twenty-two thousand. And so that would add theoretically, if that played out that way, we would add another two hundred and twenty-two thousand to our our reserve at the end of the year and bump up to six point six million dollars. So that concludes the expenditure side. Do I have any questions on that?
Questions for Mr. Kellman on expenditures or the budget for the world? Dr. Wyatt?
I just had one on the uh high school credit recovery going from ten thousand to forty thousand. Are they enhancing that program or?
So the the program that we had uh expired and and maybe Mr. Dick can explain this a little bit better than than I can, but um the program we were using, uh, we were no longer going to be able to use. And so the one that we're anticipating having to acquire the software licensing costs and so forth, we're expecting that it's going to be that kind of increase. So. Is that about right?
Perfectly stated.
What, what, what were the two products old versus?
Uh, the new one is Edmentum and the last one was?
Grab point?
Grab point. Yes, thank you.
I heard good things about them.
Yeah, we, we, we use it. We started using it. We were paying for it with the extra refunds. Everybody loves it. It's much more streamlined. It's working for the kids. So.
Back over you, Dr. Wyatt. So I had two things. One, uh, in Mr. Starr's area, I know we've talked about the the whole backflow preventer um initiatives in the state. Um, the the costs that could potentially be anticipated with schools, is that factored in here somewhere?
Um, when you say backflow?
So. Uh, okay, can just come out of my account. Yeah, okay. All right. Um, and so the tuition reimbursement topic. Um, so that's a big one for me. Um, so this, we, we went through the first set of reimbursements. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so because we hit the cap, um, everybody that submitted, um, I know it was prorated across. What, what did that prorate look like? What did each individual person not get?
So for the first half of this year, um, we take half of that allotment, the fifty thousand, so it's twenty-five thousand. We had, I believe, about a little over thirty thousand requests. So for each person, they got, you know, five sixths of basically of their, the amount that they were expecting to receive.
Okay. And what would it take for the board or the district um out of the goodness of their heart of changing that for this year?
My guess, it would probably take a resolution and and we'd probably want to entertain that maybe at the final budget, I would think, if you wanted to go that route.
Okay.
Create a resolution to um amend that basically um as what's stated in the contract.
Okay. What's that?
An MOU or a resolution?
Yeah, well, it sounds like it would probably require a board vote, right? And then it would be a little MOU for the rest of the term of the contract.
Contract.
Yeah.
If we set a different. See, like if we set a different CMV, yes. Yes. Um, so I know you said for the second half, we were anticipating something, but when will we know that?
Um, well, we already have uh a certain amount of requests in like a probably a lion's share of the requested right now, but the second half of the the semester, so to speak, or the the school of fiscal year. And so um the requests we've received so far are right at around. Um, I think if you take the thirty from the first, I think we're at like seventy now for the second. So that's hundred for the year. Okay.
Um, all right. So is that, is that something that we could potentially, if we put it on a board agenda, could we tackle that sooner than later? So folks have a better understanding of it for this year? All right. Um, that's all I had. Anyone else to miss McCloskey?
Um, just a quick question. Obviously, over the past few years, I've watched the district reserve continue to go up, which is great. Um, have we? So have we used any of it? Like, are, have we dipped into it previously? Like, or is this just continuing every time or there are things?
Well, prior to those increases, yeah, we had to, you know, every time we had to in prior five or six years, when the the reserve was declining, that was every year we were dipping.
We were dipping just for regular, but.
Right, just for operations.
Just for operations. Oh, and we haven't had to do that, but is that, this also is only for operations or can it, will we dip into it for things? If if there was something big that we needed to get done or with a certificate and that?
You could, like, you could dip into it, like, you could utilize that reserve for like a one-time expense, like expenditure that you had in mind. Um, you know, typically I don't like to use those dollars just because those are a little bit more precious dollars.
Yeah.
Um, which is why, for instance, like the the deck field, um, you know, we use the Kent County Impact Field Fund, um, you know, it's quite frankly, probably the interest rates we've earned on that last year probably will pay for that. So um, so when we have opportunities like that, I'd rather use something like that as opposed to our our current operating dollars.
I guess I just, I, my question was just because I had never, it's never been talked about because we've been growing it. So I just kind of wondered like what it would, what kind of scenario would it be?
So the beauty of it is, is because it's discretionary in nature, we can use it for whatever we want. Yeah. So the sky's the limit, really. Um.
That's great. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. So this will also come back for a vote at the end on the preliminary budget. So thank you, Mr. Kellman. We're on to item three point two, superintendent report. Dr. Lucas?
Thank you, President Dempsey. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I want to start tonight by welcoming back our teachers who have returned to work since the last meeting. New teacher started last Tuesday, August thirteenth. And uh the remaining teachers came in this week and uh began connecting with each other, setting up the classrooms and undergoing some important pre-service activities. One of those was a community simulation facilitated by the United Way at the high school yesterday. Uh, staff from Central Chipman and the high school experienced how difficult it is to live below the poverty line through controlled exercise using role players and scenarios um posed by the facilitators. Uh, the training helped to uh helped us understand the challenges many of the families go through and helped us develop the empathy necessary to support our students with the highest needs. So thanks to Mr. Weller for getting that set up. It was very successful. We also had our first training with our weapons detection devices today. We remind everyone that they will be in use for all home football games and other large events. These devices are advanced technology which will not interfere with entry and do not alert on small items like keys and cell phones. So we think these detectors are going to increase our safety and security posture significantly with little to note a negative impact on the quality of the fan experience. Counting down the first day of school for students very soon, uh, but between now and then, there are a lot of things going on. Uh, next week on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, schools will host meet and greets for many of our students. And on Thursday, August twenty-ninth, we are traditional transition day for grades K four, six and nine. Delaware Early Childson Childhood Center will have a meet and greet on Thursday, the twenty-ninth as well. Friday, August thirtieth and Monday, September second, schools are closed. And then the first day of school for all students is Tuesday, September third. We can't wait for that. Finally, since we don't have another board meeting between now and then, uh, we want everybody to remember the primary election day on September tenth. Students are not in school that day. Um, uh, but I know we're all looking forward to school getting started. It's going to be another great year in Lake Forest. As always, I'd like everyone to follow our district and school webpages to keep you up to date with the latest school messaging. We're also on Facebook, X and Instagram. Use social media. If you're like me and just want to talk to a real person, give a call to your school. Our call is here at the central business office. That's all I have. Thank you. And I yield the floor back for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Any questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas and superintendent report?
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We are up to section four, unfinished business. Four point one, application for certificate of necessity. So that's me again, and uh I will do just like I did last week. We've had a chance to look this over and dot the i's and cross the t's. And um I'm going to pass it back over to Mr. Kellerman, who is going to let you summarize uh the minor changes were made to it and let you know that it's ready for a vote.
Yeah. So one of the things you might notice is the total overall cost went from one point nine eight million to two point two seven. So it's not a huge increase. Um, but it is an increase nonetheless. Uh, basically that increase is attributable to um the uh architecture and engineering firm using the state um construction rate, you know, the new school or or um addition construction rate, I think it's like five hundred and fifty dollars uh a square foot. And so that's what the Department of Education's used to seeing is that rate. And so when we look at the amount of square pages, uh, square footage that we want to add uh and we multiply it by that rate, that's what you're seeing here more in that figure. Uh, the other thing he added in too is is we expressed a desire to have a divider to be able to to divide that that area off into two sections. Uh, so you could have two groups using that that space at 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 the same time. Um, so that added a cost to it as well. And then also he he added in a factor uh to be able to potentially, if we wanted to um from the exit from the building there, create a corridor so that you stay indoors the entire time uh going into the side entrance to the um the multi-purpose space there. So you'd have one entrance coming in from the cafeteria area and one coming in from the hallway from the sixth grade line. And so those two combined uh added a little bit of square footage. Uh, we've also added the language, basically that this would add, you know, functionally of the potential of two classroom spaces. And so with that comes the increase in capacity and 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 that's one of the things that we've been trying to address is being able to increase the capacity of that school as well. And so um on one of the pages there, it talks about how it uh it will increase the capacity of Chipman as well. So those were the the big items that we were trying to address.
All right. Um, so this was tabled last time. I think technically for us to have some discussion or we should have a motion on the floor. Mrs. Starkey?
It's actually a motion later than the agenda.
Oh, is there?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, it's down.
No, I'm sorry. We, okay, so this is, no, so this is just, this is just discussion. Okay.
I understand. Sorry about that.
Um, okay, questions then? On the certificate of necessity. So um, so all this is going to do is add the space. We're not doing anything with the kitchen, not doing anything with that. Will we be doing any, any refinishing work? So it's probably not part of this, right? If we were to do that later, that would be.
No, I mean, if there were funding left over, I mean, it could potentially be used for anything related to patch it. So.
Yeah, I just, as I was reading, as I was looking through, there's a picture there of the atrium. And you know, that just again, if you had, let's do something like that in there, it'd be pretty nice.
Yeah, the high school.
Um, these costs take into account prevailing wage?
Uh, I believe it does. Yeah, I think they have to. Uh, I believe it does, yeah, I think they have to.
Is there any?
Yeah, any project of this size can take into account prevailing.
Yeah, is there any, any way? Any way for the architect or anyone to come up with that the price would be without, cause I know that's a big topic in the state right now. I know there's legislation that was be trying to be introduced that would um. Not require school districts to to do it for these jobs, so. Um, anyway, as a, as a discussion point, as a talking point, as an example, if there's any way that we come up with the. Project pricing that would be based on competitive bidding, no, not just the value range. Okay, anything else from anybody?
Just a question for me, uh, what's, we've only gone through this in the past once recently that I can think of. Uh, with the root, what's the general timeframe for them to render the decisions? Once we submit it?
Um, so the deadline to submit is August thirty-first, and then I think they have it due to. O M B, the Department of Education has it due to O M B. Uh, probably no later than November first, I think the typically for all agencies, I think it's like October, the first week in October, but. They're always late in getting their stuff in, and so at that point, um. They're probably gonna sift through all these requests, I think at least a dozen school districts this year are putting in CNs, and so. Uh, they'll look through all those those packages and and rack and stack and prioritize. Uh, what they feel is the ones that they should attack. Um, and uh they'll have some sort of discussion with us at some point before they make their recommendation to O M B. Uh, as to which ones they wanna try to fund or not.
So the final decision, now do we expect that by December or?
So, if it makes it into the governor's recommended budget in January. Then, I mean, that's usually pretty much ninety-five, ninety-eight percent, I mean, you're pretty much there, okay? So that's the big hurdles to get.
We'll at least know whether it's favorable or not by then, yeah.
Lots of steps along the way, right? DOE has to recommend it to O M B, O M B has to take it up and put it in the budget, has to go through budget, a- agency budget hearings. And it has to make it to the governor's recommended budget, and it has to go through legislative hearings.
I didn't know what they have available to put, you know, cause when they look at the operating budget from the state, they they try to see what they. Could afford to push on to the bond bill. Um, and whatever amount they can afford to push on to the bond bill determines how many capital projects they can take on. So, so the bad news is that if there's a lot of those gates that we would have to get through. The good news is, there's also all of those gates to get through that if it's not included, are opportunities for us to frankly make some noise. Yeah, I mean, the other good thing is is this will probably be the the lowest cost CNN applied, I mean. Because the threshold is a million dollars for major capital improvements, and so this at two point two million, I'm sure this will be probably the smallest. Project they'll see.
Oh, and on this, so, um. There's not really the agent on this all one-on-one, um. Is this like what we submitted last year that has all the cross-throughs?
Yeah, I talked to the um Mister Grove, the art architect from RG Architects, and and I asked him about that, and he said, um. He felt it was more important to show what we had presented at our last C N three years ago, so that they'd have it for a basis of comparison. Um, because we did put in for something similar to this, it was six classroom space addition. At Chipman, this, we're just talking about a two-classroom multipurpose room addition, so it's a little bit more scaled down. Um, but, you know, he felt that it was important to put that in there and to show it, okay?
All right, thank you, Miss Kelman. All right, uh, another discussion item, section five, five point one, child nutrition services. Price increase, Jennifer Montana, welcome.
Same every year, um, uh, there is an increase. As you see on the letter, um, again, that's dictated through USDA and ULE. So, I mean, if you have any questions about how that they come about the members.
Anyone have any questions on the uh the increase in the letter for this is Montana? Okay, thank you very much, this will come up for vote later in the meeting as well. Thank you, Jen. All right, we're up to section, so some action items, section seven, this is starting.
Section seven, uh, make motion for the resolution seven point one, as written.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions, motion carries five to zero.
Section eight, personnel resignations, I make a motion, we approve motion eight point one through eight point three, as written.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Section eleven, personnel transfers, I make a motion, we approve resolution eleven point one, as written.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Section thirteen, personnel officers of employment, I make a motion, we approve resolution thirteen point one through thirteen point one one, as written.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Section fifteen, personalities of absence, I make a motion, we approve resolution fifteen point one and fifteen point two, as written.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Section nineteen, personnel appointments, I make a motion, we approve resolution nineteen point one and nineteen point two, as written.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty-one, other business, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-one point one, school choice as presented.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Staying in section twenty-one, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-one point two, application for certificate of necessity. Uh, as presented tonight.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or further discussion on this topic? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Still, section twenty-one, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-one point three, child nutrition services, the dollar price increase as presented.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty-two, other business, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-two point one, as written.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, if questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty-three, other business, financial report, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-three point one, as presented.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries five to zero.
And finally, section twenty-three point two, I make a motion, we approve the uh twenty twenty-five preliminary budget as presented.
Second, emotional floor properly, second, any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Starkey, thank you, Mr. Rao, to section twenty-five, board reports, discussion items, twenty-five point one. Good of the order, opportunity for board members to address any topics not otherwise covered on the agenda, the floor is open. Mrs. Stark.
Um, just wanted to thank all of our administrators, just for all the work you do in the PD realm. I heard from a few people this week already, just about how beneficial the simulation was, um, I think. Um, was it conscious discipline was today somewhere, yeah, two people actually, I was talking to them and they're like, it was really good, so. Um, just appreciate you guys and all that you're doing for for our kids and our teachers.
Thank you, Mrs. Starkey. Uh, just throw out a couple of things, so, um. Was able to attend the news, new teacher orientation last week. So it was nice to see all of our administrators there as well, supporting, but also all the uh happy, smiling, shiny faces. They're joining Lake Forest or starting a career in education, so that was, that was great. I look forward to seeing uh all staff uh during the welcome ceremony on Monday. Um, I like how Doctor Lucas said, the the first day of school, that we're excited. Um, I'm sure all of our students feel the same way. So, uh, yeah, so, uh, definitely looking forward to that, this is, this is gonna be a a truly a great year in Lake Forest. So thank you to everyone that has gotten us to that point and for all the hard work that you're putting in now and will do over the the next year. Um, that is all I had, if anyone has anything else, um. If I could ask for just a very brief executive session, I have three personnel items to to question or bring up. So with that said, uh, Mrs. Stark, if we could have a motion to enter executive session?
So, yeah.
Second, emotional floor properly, seconded, enter executive session, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero, thank you all for being here, so we'll be in a brief executive session. We will not anticipate coming out and conducting any more business other than a journey, but. Uh, anyone's more than welcome to stick around until the door opens again, so, but thank you all very much, have a great night.